All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oil. I'm Coach Ashley. Today we are having a Southern Girl Party. I am from Alabama originally. We've got Julie here on our team originally from Oklahoma. How's it going? And we also have a special guest here today, Jackie, OG Texas, but living in North Carolina. How's it going?
Yeah.
So I want to get into, we're gonna have an opportunity to really have you share your story. I want people to know who you are, what brought you to Young Living and where you are today as a result of it. But before we get to that, let's get over into the chat here. As you're coming in, we're so excited to have you. Where in the world are you? Today, we're going to be talking about prospecting. That is why I've brought Jackie here today. If you're here looking for help, just generally speaking, about anything, not just about your prospecting, if you're stuck on something with your good oiling sites, if you're, you've got questions about tech, you're not sure where to start with us. Leave us a question in the Q and A. We will be here to help you. Julie, in particular, is our absolute sleuth in chief and she's going to, she's going to be here throughout the call to help as well. So we've got some chat coming in here. What is up? Washington State, Michigan, Virginia, Cincinnati, Washington State, Pennsylvania. Keep them coming, you guys. We're excited to have you here today. Last week, we did a call on the basics. On just, you know, the things you need to know to get yourself moving. And when part of what we did was, we kind of went back to the very beginning of this industry, which if those of you, you know, who are there can recall, this industry has its roots, you know, it's, it is said that this industry began, the network marketing industry began in about the late 1800s. So I believe it was the origins of the company that became Amway, or not Amway, I'm sorry, Avon, was, was the first network marketing company and that was the late 1800s. So the things that work in this business in 2021 are the exact same things that worked over a hundred years ago. And, and so we talked a little bit about those things last week in terms of how you run and manage your business. But we got a lot of questions about, well, what do I say? And how do I have these conversations? And so we decided to have a bit of a deep dive into prospecting. I will be sharing, we've got some slides today. I will be sharing how you can integrate your prospecting practice into your good oiling system. We are based on a customer management or CRM contact manager at the core of our platform that you should be using. I don't want to get too into the weeds on that because I really do want to empower you today with the confidence of what to say, why you should say the things you need to say. And then of course, you know, just how you can be operating. So you always know what comes next. So again, if you are here today looking for specific help, please put your questions in the Q and A. And if you signed up for a website review, definitely let us know that you're here in the Q and A as well. And if you need a site review, if we have space for that, go ahead and request it in the Q and A. And we do have space for one. We had one cancellation. So all right, let's go ahead and talk to Jackie first, right? I would really like to hear from you. Tell us about your background with Young Living and, and then we'll, we'll get into the training and we'll hear more about what you know.
Guess I have to unmute myself. I've been with Young Living for nineteen plus years and I did not get in the business to do the business. I actually signed up because I was a massage therapist and one of my clients said, hey, if you ever want to use oils, these are the best. Well, I'll be honest, I had no intention of using oils, but she was a really good client. So I signed up just because it was good business. Magically, sometime down the road, I actually started using the oils I got. And I think the starter kit back then was like seven oils. You guys have got it so good. And I was amazed at what happened with them. So I got sold and I started using them on my clients. My clients loved them and wanted to buy them. I didn't want to stock them. So I just said, here's how to sign up. I had no guidance from an upline or anything like that. And the person who signed me up wasn't really doing the business. So I was like a real ignoramus when it came to how to do that. So I had like a bazillion people frontline on me because I just helped everybody get an account and I was paying for my products. So I thought that was pretty cool. And then I started getting smarter about learning the business and became a business focused builder. I'm a platinum and my goal is to obviously keep moving up the ranks and my jam, because I've been in several businesses as an entrepreneur before. My, my expertise and so forth is basically what, why Ashley asked me to come here today. I, I know how to talk to people to get them to open up so I can actually help them. And that's why I'm here today to help you.
Amazing. And I'm so grateful that you're here. You guys may know Jackie, she's been on, on this training here before on our weekly work sessions multiple times. And you may have seen me recommend Platinum Business Systems, which is a training that we created. It's on her site. That's good oiling, not sorry, jackymccloughlin.com/platinum. We'll put that link in the description of our YouTube channel. And I guess if one of you guys can pop that into the chat, that'd be super good. While I keep talking about how awesome Jackie is here for just a second. So Jackie has been an entrepreneur for over forty years. We work together. So Jackie is a client of mine. So we've worked on developing programs and systems in her get oiling account. And one of the things that I've learned through working with Jackie and knowing her numbers and understanding how she's built her business over time is, is that, and also like while working concurrently with other leaders in the company at different ranks and with varying histories and approaches to building this business. I can tell you that over the last couple of years where I have seen, I have seen a lot of things happening as we all have. If you've been with Young Living over the last couple of years, it's been a lot of changes. A lot of folks, leaders in particular, have, have seen some dramatic dips and, and changes or stalling in their growth or in their business, in their check. Jackie is someone, because of her approach, hers, her growth has remained stable. She has retained rank. She retains customers in a way that I don't really see a lot of other people doing in the kind of numbers that she, that she has. So there's, there's incredible retention. Jackie's not going to brag about herself. So I'm here to do that. Jackie has incredible retention on her team. And that retention is the reason why you can keep a rank, a really good paying rank, like platinum, for instance, for a very long time. And I know not everybody here today is necessarily, you know, gunning for RCD. You may have, you know, an oil adjacent business and you love having Young Living as a supporting player in the grand scheme of things, or maybe you are gunning for the top. Either way, you want to build a business that is solid enough to will to future generations to retire on, right? And, and something that doesn't become a job for you. And so what you want to do is develop relationships by communicating the right way. And Jackie is really, in my opinion, the foremost expert of this in the Young Living space. And so we've brought her here today to really back up the stuff that I want to share with you about recruiting and, and building on social, which is an area of my own expertise from previous building. But I want you guys to have someone from Young Living here who knows what she's talking about to impart her wisdom as we're going through this process. Does that sound good, you guys? Let me see your show. Is that sound good? Does that work for everybody? All right. So without further ado, and please do, if you have questions, please put them in the Q and A because the chat becomes a little bit of a party and, and we can miss what's going on there. So if you, if you want us to see it, please put in the Q and A. I'm going to go ahead and get into some slides. And guys, if we could turn our videos off just while we're doing the slides here, I think it's going to make for a better viewing experience for our recording. So let's go ahead and do that. And we will get this show on the road. We, let me know that you can, that you can see my screen. Can you see my screen, guys? Okay. Thank you. All right. Great. So today on the weekly work session, we're talking prospecting 101, right? This is how you look for, find and turn leads into customers, right? So we're talking about having conversations that convert. Most of us, and maybe if you want to, you know, show me your hand real quick, like how many of you have ever like just posted something about Young Living, like, hey, here's a cool thing. And maybe you put your Young Living signup link like on your Facebook and, and like five people just said, yeah, I'm going to go buy that. That's no one, right? If you make a post and here's the Young Living thing, you guys go check it out, go buy it. It's a total fluke, right? If something like that happens, it's just not how things happen. Conversations are how we grow in network marketing. And we're going to get into exactly how we can have those conversations. What makes up those conversations? And then of course, creating opportunities. So you can have lots and lots and lots of those conversations to grow your business. So here's what we're going to do today. We're going to have our training. We're going to have member website reviews and we'll have our Q and A and support ongoing throughout. Put those questions in the Q and A if you got them as we're going through here so that we can answer them as we're, as I am running my mouth here. And then of course, if there's anything left for me there that I need to address or Jackie can address specifically, we'll be doing that at the close of the presentation. If you watch this in the future, hi, welcome. We would love to have you live on one of these calls. You can go to get oiling.com/weeklyworksession. This is a free training that we offer every single week to team YL. Everyone is welcome. Feel free to invite your team. All right. So today's training is about how to create conversations that convert to new customers. We're going to talk about the stuff that has always worked in the hundred plus year history of this industry and the secrets of selling on social. So we're really going to talk about how to translate the stuff that's always worked so that it makes sense in the age of social media. So quick question and Jackie, Julie, if you could let me know what the answers are to this, guys, let us know in the chat. Where have most of your personal enrolled come from in your Young Living business? Are they friends, family, coworkers, friends of friends? Are you successful at finding people on social? Where would you say the majority of people that you have on your team in your organization have come from? We've seen some answers come in.
I see friends and friends of friends, Instagram, word of mouth, friends and friends of friends. That's popular.
Yep. Awesome. Awesome. So that, that is the norm, right? Because this is network marketing. We're marketing through our networks, who we know and who they know, right? So let's get into a little prospecting 101. So it's really basic. Really, guys, it's like three things. Number one, we have two ears and one mouth for a reason. We want to always look for an opening and I'm going to expand on all of these points. I'm going to invite Jackie to do the same. And then finally pause before you pitch. These are the three most important things you need to know about prospecting. Specifically about finding people who could be open to Young Living with whom you can share and sign up. We have two ears and one mouth for a reason. You want to always be looking for an opening and pause before you pitch. All right. But first, before we get into all of the nuts and bolts of what those things mean, let's get our head screwed on straight. All right. Really important to remember and, and really keep this, these are mantras for your business. So really just screenshot this when I'm done going through all of these points and, and keep this and remember this and remind yourself of this. Every time you sit down to try to find new people and new opportunities to grow your business. Number one, this and all businesses is a numbers game. So if you do enough of the right action frequently enough, you will win, right? You do enough of the right things enough, you'll win. Next, some will, some won't. So what? Most will in due time with the right follow-up though, right? We need to detach ourselves from the outcome. This is something that, that really I think gets in the way of successful sharing the majority of the time. We get really hung up on, on our expectation and our desire, whether that's to increase our check, to keep our rank, to get to the next rank, or just to close the sale because we just really feel like we need it to happen, right? We want to make sure that we are detaching ourselves from the outcome so that we can be fully in service of the person that we want to help because that really is how we get this right. And then everyone, everyone, everyone that you know falls into one of these three business positive categories. So every interaction that you have can be a net gain for you. They can be a customer, a client or a connector, client being brand partner, connector being a refer to one of the previous two. All right. Please, please, please learn these things, internalize these things, believe these things, bring them into your being. It's a numbers game. Some will, some won't. So what? And everybody, every interaction can fall into a business positive, a net positive for you. And then finally, huge mindset shift here, you guys. You may have just a handful of people that you think you can talk to, or 200 people on your social, or whatever, five people opening your emails. There are billions of people in the world. Social media connects us to a lot of them, a majority of them even. Especially when we consider where YL is actually showing up and Young Living is a global business. You have an abundance of opportunity. Every interaction you have can result in a net positive for your business. Don't worry about the outcome when you're interacting and just do enough of the interacting the right way and you're going to get what you want. All right. Now let's break down our 101 points. First, two ears, one mouth. So your title may be brand partner, right? But your actual job is consulting. So let's talk about what a successful consult looks like. I'm going to give you my points here and then I would love for Jackie to chime in. All right. So what a successful consult looks like is number one, it's all about them and helping them solve a problem. Not about you teaching a thing, showing an oil. No, a consult is about helping a person get a result, right? In that consult, you ask lots of questions to learn more about what their problems are, what their goals are and how you can help them. And then you listen for those opportunities to serve. Those are the openings. You ask if they're open to a solution before you offer one. And when they say yes, that they are open to learning about the solution that you know, you then sign them up with the product that you know will help them solve that problem. Makes sense? All right, Jackie, give me your two cents here.
Yes. Well, you summed it up perfectly. It is all about them and helping them solve a problem. If that's not your goal, when you are talking to prospects or members, then you're off base and you're going to not have the results you want. When you take it away from, yes, we all are business builders and we're all trying to build a business, but your focus is not increasing your OGV and it's not signing up more people. Even though those are the things you need to do, your focus needs to be who can I help and how can I help them? And the only way you're going to find out how you can help them is by asking those questions and listening. Those two ears, I wish I had four sometimes. Not that I want to look that way. The more you can listen and, and listen in the sense of, you know, when I say listen, you know, people have lost the ability to really listen with them means really taking it in and remembering what they said. You know, you can sit in front of somebody, whether it's on a zoom or in person and they're talking and you're nodding your head and you're thinking of 14,000 other things that you need to be doing or what's ahead in your day. You need to learn to focus on that person and really listen because everything they say is giving you the next question to ask. And if you're not really listening, you're not going to ask the right next question. And then you're list, look, you're listening for those opportunities to serve. That opportunity to serve is how can I help them solve this issue or problem or help them find the right thing that's going to make their life happier. And then if you, asking that open solution before offering one. So if, if somebody told me, for instance, I wish I could get some better sleep. I just can't sleep and I wake up tired and yada, yada, yada. And they go on and on and on. And then a question such as, if I were to share with you what's worked for other people, would you be willing to, to explore that? Then they give you permission to talk about products. And if they say, yeah, I want to try that, don't drop the ball and forget to close. Like, okay, well, let's get you set up with your own account and you can get what you need.
I love it. I love it.
People make it a whole lot harder than it has to be. It's really simple.
It really, really is. You guys, let us know in the chat, is this making sense to you? It's quite straightforward here, but it's, isn't it easy to complicate it? Can you think of a time that maybe you've complicated this? Or maybe put your foot in your mouth, right? Or maybe, you know, when we're looking for an opening, we're, we hear it and we go, ooh, 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 I know, I know. There's an oil for that. Let me oil that, right? So if somebody says, like Jackie just said, you know, oh, I just wish I could get some sleep. You don't just jump right in and say, oh, I have a supplement that I take and it totally helps me. Or hey, I have this one thing. Here's the information. Let me, let me, let me send you a bunch of stuff, right? So instead of that, we don't want to go there until they ask you to. When people make the decision for themselves, when they say, can I have that? They're asking for what you ultimately are giving them. And so what we basically want to do in our conversations is set it up so that they can ask you for it. And all that really entails is asking the right questions. So this is why we're always looking for an opening. You don't go there with what you know you want to suggest to them, right? We don't pitch until they say, yes, I'm open, right? So let's talk about what an opening looks like. This is when they share information with you and you see a connection from their problem to a Young Living product. Or you know, or have a Young Living product story of overcoming from their problem or that you're confident based on what they've shared with you, that you can help them get a result that they want. And look, if you don't see an opening, maybe you're having a conversation with somebody and you just don't feel like you're seeing an open, an opening, you can create openings by digging deeper with questions. Because the answer is always going to be to ask more and better questions. So Jackie, can we talk for just a minute about how we can help to facilitate these sort of openings and opportunities inside of our conversations? You know, let's just say, for instance, that we're, we're catching up with someone we haven't spoken to in a while. What kind of questions are you asking to help create those openings?
Yeah. Well, if I'm catching up with somebody that I haven't talked to in a while, the obvious first questions are going to be, hey, what's been going on? I haven't seen you or talked to you in forever. What's going on? And listen for an opportunity to find out if things are going really well or things are not going so well. And if they're not going so well, then ask more questions. So let's say they're talking about the state of affairs in the world today and they're all freaked out about the, the viruses and the shots and the this and the that. And they say, it sounds like you're under a lot of stress to me. Would that, does that seem fair to say? Or it sounds like you're really worried about, you know, the things that are going on in the world today. And they're going to probably jump right in that because like 99% of the world today would say yes to that, right? So you're going to say, tell me more about that. What, how's that manifesting for you? Is it affecting your sleep? Is it affecting whether you're afraid to go out in public? Is it affecting, find out how that stress is manifesting in their life by asking questions. Because when you find out how it's manifesting, you're helping them because they're expressing it, you're not suggesting it. You might suggest something if they can't put it into words. You may give them little clues, but you're not going to give them all the answers because that's not coming from them. So if you need to prompt them with something like, well, is that affecting your life in any way? And if they say, oh yeah, it's like blah, blah, blah. They just go on. Now you've got a ton of information to work with. If they don't, and they just say, well, I don't know, I'm just so, I, I feel so isolated. Well, tell me more about that. How, how does that feel? Because if you're inquiring more into them and how they're experiencing whatever it is, you're going to find that opportunity because you're, you're not assuming and projecting your own assumptions onto their situation. You're asking continually asking more questions without it being an inquisition. There's that fine balance of this is a conversation and I'm actually showing that I care and I really do want to know. I'm not bombarding you with questions just for the sake of asking questions. There is a difference.
Absolutely.
It's an art and you get better and better at it, the more you practice it. So just don't be afraid to get out there and start having questions where you're actually talking to the person in front of you with sincere desire to know what's going on with them. And if there's a way you can help them. You know, the, the other thing is let go of the, the expectation that I am going to give them something. Because when you go in with that, you're still coming across as pushy and salesy. So go into that conversation where the only thing that matters to you is being genuine and sincere and actually caring. And if that's your posture, when you go into the conversation, they feel it. And they know, they're going to let their guard down because they don't feel like you're pushing something on them and they're not putting up a wall to say, okay, that's enough. They may be nodding and being polite, but they're really in their back of their mind saying, shut up.
Yep, that's right.
If you're being sincere and you really do care, they feel that and they not, and they don't put up their guard and they really open up and they tell you everything you need to know to help them.
That's right. That is so right. And guys, you know, just to point back to some of the, you know, sort of a theme here of the, the stuff that's always worked, still works and will continue to work. You know, Jim Rohn is a storied trainer in this industry going back to really what I, you know, what I think is its heyday in, in the nineties and eighties and nineties and, or you know, sort of the original heyday. I think there's still like, this is an amazing industry that keeps growing. Don't get me wrong. But you know, one of the things that, that he said, and I'm paraphrasing here is that, you know, you can get what you want by helping others get what they want first. And, and that really needs to be our aim, our mindset, our focus. And so what you're doing and you're, you're asking questions is not, let me ask questions so I can find a product. It's let me have a conversation with someone and really dig into where they are and where they'd rather be. And then if there is something that I have that can align with that, I want to make an offer, right? So always be looking for that opening and create openings with those genuine caring questions in your conversation. Now, once you realize that you can make a connection from their problem to a product, hit pause. If you don't want to come across as pushy or salesy, do not jump right in with an offer immediately when you see an opening. Always ask if they are open before offering information, right? So Jackie worded something very similar to this just a little bit ago. If I could show you a way to solve the problem you just shared with me, would you be open to checking it out or learning more about it? How many of you guys, maybe just a quick show of hands, have you ever used a question like this in a conversation? Let us know how that's worked for you in the chat. This is a really, really, really important question for you all to remember to use, to learn how to use. And you can use this in conversation. This also works beautifully as a setup to a one-on-one call. If you're on social, if you're in the DMs and you're just chatting back and forth and this conversation is going well and someone's opening up and, and you're being there for them, being a good friend and you see a solution for them. You say, if I could show you a way to figure that out, or I know of a way, would you be interested in learning more? Give them an opportunity to say yes. There is a, and I do not remember the citation, but I used to teach this all the time. But there's, there's in, in sales, there have been studies that have shown if you can get someone to say yes, whether that's typing it or saying it verbally. If you can get them to say yes several times in a conversation before you make an offer to sell, the likelihood of them saying yes ultimately is going to increase dramatically. So basically what we're doing is we're creating yeses that they are, they're sort of opening these doors themselves. One of my mentors, Ray Higden, he talks about, you know, not trying to lead a horse to water by pulling it to water, right? Or pushing it to water. We're salting their food. We're letting them get thirsty so that they can come drink at this water that we're guiding them to, right? We want the decision to be theirs because they're going to be more committed and it's just going to be more fulfilling across the board. If you guys are in sync on you being the helper of them to find their solution and of course, them being the decision maker, right? Jackie, is there anything else you'd add here before we move to the next one?
Yeah, real quick, beautiful, maybe Irish name. I don't know if I'm going to butcher it, but Stela Dunkley asked a question in the chat. She said, I tried using that question once, but it felt practiced and unnatural to me. And guess what? It will when you haven't been doing it that way. It's going to feel weird, but I can promise you, you don't have to use these words. Just use the concept of the question by saying, you know, hey, if I could show you what has worked for other people, would you be interested in hearing about it? It doesn't have to be this exact question, but it has to convey that, that option of you are, you are actually choosing for me to tell you more. Because if you don't ask that question and you just tell them more, that's when you cross that line into feeling pushy and salesy to them. You might not feel pushy and salesy, but if they haven't asked for you to give you their, some options, then it becomes pushy and salesy. And this is how you get them to ask you. It just takes practice.
Absolutely. You know, I experienced this myself. One of my uplines in my first company, they were teaching us because we, just the nature of the product that we had, we were actually cold calling back then, realtors and mortgage brokers and, and setting appointments for presentations, for business presentation. And one of the things that he taught and it felt really uncomfortable. And one of the things that he taught and it felt really uncomfortable to me in the beginning because you know, this isn't my background. I was like, you know, a single mom without a profession at that point, just getting started in network marketing. Um, but I remember the thing that, that he said was um, you know, he would ask them, would you um, would you do me the professional courtesy of letting me know that you won't make our appointment if you find out that you can't make it? And at the time, I, and this sounds really pretty straightforward, right? Like if you were having, um, this is sort of an unspoken rule. If you were gonna be meeting with uh, you know, a lawyer or a doctor or something, right? You can do the professional courtesy of canceling your appointment, communicating that cancellation before ghosting someone, right? Well, it felt really weird to me uh, in the beginning to, to actually say that. But you know what? Once I actually started adopting it, my posture shifted and I became a really strong recruiter. Like I, I actually did really well and, and adopting that language, which was not mine to begin with, but bringing that into my being, and you guys know words create reality, right? Like this is um, this is something that's kind of, that's proven uh, in, in physics. We can speak things into existence. Uh, look up the, the water study with Emoto. We can actually shift our results by changing our language. So consider adopting this for the sake of your results. All right. So I want to talk about two scenarios here before we move on into uh, our next phase of website reviews and Q and A. Uh, and let's talk about how to put these things into action. So I wanna talk with you guys first about creating opportunities for more of these consultative conversations. And then how to actually have the consultative conversation and sign them up for Young Living. Does that sound good? Maybe show of hands. You guys wanna learn how to create more consultative conversation opportunities? Show me your hands. And uh, and then of course, let's walk through with Jackie's overseeing here. How we actually have this consult and sign someone up for Young Living. All right. So the first thing that I wanna make sure that I point out here, and look, guys, maybe you've signed someone up just from a link on Instagram before, or you've got a link in bio and somebody's bought product once or twice. Or maybe you know somebody that's got a lot of social capital, they're an influencer on social and, and they seem to be able to just sign people up with links all the time. Good for them. I, I wish them all the success in the world, but uh, but Jackie here is my witness and our combined 30 years of experience in this industry. I can tell you with absolute certainty that that approach is not one that A, duplicates successfully or B, ultimately serves your people in the uh, to the end of retention and getting them results. So what we're teaching you here today, and this is 100%, uh, you know, I, I will, I will debate anybody on this. All roads to success in this industry lead to a one-on-one conversation with your prospect to get them started. Because if you wanna duplicate your success, they need to know that they need to be able to have a conversation with someone. Links don't convert unless you are an affiliate marketer and affiliate marketing is not network marketing. Network marketing is relationships. So, and rant, all roads lead to a one-on-one consultative conversation period. This is what's always, always worked in this business. It will continue to be the thing that makes this business work. If you're interested in duplication, if you wanna treat Young Living like an affiliate opportunity, by all means, put your link in bio. Just please serve your people and connect them to someone upline who's dedicated to building the business. All right. So how to create opportunities on social for you to have more of these one-on-one consultative conversations? First, always aim to grow your network and make new friends and be a good friend to other people. Let this be fun and fulfilling. You know what? I should just add a caveat here real quick. So you guys know that I know what I'm talking about. Every single person I ever recruited into a network marketing company, a team that I've built and I've built several and I am where I am today because of the teams that I've built and the success that I've had. I recruited 100% off of social media. Okay, Jackie is uh, Jackie is someone who's built really 100% warm market. Now you are connected to those people, right, on social media. Uh, but I went from knowing no one who I could get to get started with me to finding friends on social media and signing those friends up, people who are all over the world, okay? So this is coming from a perspective of someone who knows that it works. And Jackie's gonna give us our context so that you guys know, because one of those organizations for me was not Young Living. Uh, we're gonna make sure that Jackie comes in and makes any corrections if they need to be made. So number one, always aim to grow your network and make new friends and be a good friend. At the end of the day, this is network marketing and everything that you do up until the point of sharing is being a friend and having friends and having a network. Everything, if you're blogging, if you're making videos, if you're posting on social, if you're an influencer, whatever, everything that you're doing is creating an opportunity for you to just have a bigger warm market that you can have more one-on-one conversations with, all right? Now, what I wanna advise you to do, if you are serious about growing your business, is to connect with five or more of the people in your network in your DMs on a daily basis. Socially connect, not socially promote, connect socially, right? And I want you to do these following things. I want you to Ford them. How many of you guys know what Ford is? Maybe a quick show of hands. Uh, this is an acronym for uh, really just, you know, it's, it's, it's uh, getting to know somebody. It's their family occupation, recreation, dreams and goals, all right? Ford, have this conversation. This may take several conversations. Maybe you keep this chat going over the course of a week. You're having fun, you're connecting, you're getting to know someone. Let this be fun and fulfilling. As you're going through and, and, and fording with this person, listening to them, learning more about them, asking questions, digging deeper, becoming a closer friend, add their note, add notes to their contact uh, in your Get Oil Link system. Then be listening throughout that conversation for an opening. It might not happen in the first, second, third, or 12th conversation that you have with them. Just make a point to be a good friend and keep showing up to be there for them, right? Listen for an opening to help that person. And once you see an opening, and this is a social strategy, you guys, once you see an opening in that conversation, wait. Don't jump, don't even ask them right away. Don't even jump right in because this is on social, right? When they have, when they have opened up and talked about a thing that they've uh, they've got an issue with, maybe ask them some qualifying questions. And maybe the conversation trails off as they do on social. Come back in a day or two. Don't be the person who is there jumping at the bit to sell your thing because on social, people are particularly sensitive to this, right? So it'd be different if you're in a one-on-one conversation, you're face-to-face, you're on the phone, uh, you know, you're in DMs. If you're really close to the person you're in the DMs with, then you might be able to get away with saying this right away. But if you don't know them well, wait a day, come back and say something like this. I was thinking about you, or I was thinking about that conversation we had the other day and I had an idea or I know about a thing that might be helpful to you based on what you shared with me. I don't wanna intrude or like assume you want my help, but if you're open to it, I'd be really happy to share it with you and see if I can help. Does that make sense? Quick show of hands. Could you see yourself saying something like that? Could you see something like that being helpful to you, even with people that are mostly strangers to you on social? And guys, this works for more than just network marketing, right? If you're a coach or something and you're having a conversation with someone, you don't just jump in and be like, hey, I could sell you my services, right? We say, you know, we're, we're here for them, right? We're, we're asking these questions, we're having a conversation, then we come back and we say, you know what? I've been thinking about what we talked about and I think I have something that might help you. You know, I don't know if that's something you'd be interested in or not, but if you are, I'd love to, I'd love to actually show you. Are you interested? Let them say yes. Let them say no. They usually aren't gonna say no. Let them say yes and then set up that one-on-one consult on Zoom or on the phone to walk them through what you wanna share with them. And if you don't know how to make that transition, you can use this kind of verbiage. It's, well, it's visual, right? Or it's a, you know, it's, it's, it's easier to show than tell. Or I'm a visual person. It's easier for me to explain by showing, something like that, right? All right. So um, let me go back through this. Jackie, anything else that you would correct or change or add here?
Uh, no, uh, I think that's all perfect. Allison did ask a question in the chat that would, did you, she was looking for clarification on DMs. Okay. If you can read that, I'll let you just read it and answer it.
Okay. Well, so I can't open the chat successfully on my.
She says, so when you say connect in the DMs, I guess that doesn't count if you comment or engage on their posts. But it does count if you comment on their story since that goes to their DMs, question mark.
So I mean, I would just go to their DMs, like just go to them. So it's um, this is you just making a point to reach out to them and see how they're doing, right? So um, you can open a conversation like this and yeah, and this is different from posting uh, comments on, on their feed or things like that. I would just go straight to the DMs. You're, you are intentionally going to start a conversation with this person. Give them a um, you know, acknowledge something that they've shared on their profile. Uh, a kid's birthday, uh, an event in their life or their family, compliment them on their new haircut, whatever it is, right? So just, just reach out and, and share something nice with them. Uh, you know, just start a conversation, make their day. That's, that's really it.
Yeah.
All right.
And the only other thing I would say on that last one was where you, at the very bottom, when you said um, set up a consult. That's really, really important to try to do that in person, whether it's on a phone or I prefer Zoom because if I can see their face and they can see mine, they can see I'm genuinely leaning in literally and listening. And I can also see if they're doing 14 other things and if they're actually connecting with me. But if it has to be on a phone, that's the next best option. And what Ashley said is perfect. It's, it's a visual thing and it's easier for me to show you than to tell you. So that's how I get people on a Zoom.
Hmm. And you know what I should have added here? If you're local to that person, by all means, offer to come over, have them come over, sit down with them, like that really is the absolute best ideal if they're local to you. If this is someone that you know, but you happen to be on social, uh, being one-on-one belly-to-belly, as it were, it, it, that trumps everything. So definitely do that if you can. All right. Now let's uh, let me go ahead and, and, and get this out of the way here. For those of you who already have a large or engaged following or a large team and you wanna be focusing on filtering your prospecting only to the most serious leads, right? So you're not maybe, uh, maybe you've got another business uh, that you run uh, and, and Young Living is something that you sort of, you know, do very part-time on the side or whatever. Um, you know, you're not gonna be somebody who's necessarily prospecting in the DMs, you know, with five people a day. So what you can do in this case is to prominently offer a link to apply for a wellness consult with you on all of your profiles in your link in bio and be sure to use a custom page in Get Oil Link. You don't need um, uh, you don't need a separate type of system or anything like that. And we've actually done a custom lead forms or um, you know, survey type training recently uh, in our weekly work session replays on YouTube. Check it out. Uh, so put that link in your bio so that people can apply for a wellness consult with you. Uh, and then in your posts and in your social content, talk about the stories and the results that people working with you are getting from following your suggestions. Talk about them in your posts, talk about them and, and send them to the link in bio, right? So you can book a call with me in the link in my bio, send them to that link, have that in your bio, of course, on your social. Uh, and then of course, if you have a link in bio page or you wanna have one, you don't need to pay for or have Linktree. You can actually create that. We have a link in bio training on our YouTube channel as well that shows you how to use our system for that. Uh, and then of course, keep that link to apply for a wellness consult with you in your email signature and Get Oil Link. So anybody who's interested can go and sign themselves up and put all of their information in ahead of time. And the only people that you are ultimately having these wellness-focused consults with are the people who are ready to make moves, all right? It's not gonna be most of us, but it's some of us. All right. So let's talk about the consult and the signup. There's two parts to this. I'm gonna have Jackie chime in uh, for both of these and then we're gonna be moving on to our um, to our, our website reviews. All right. So first, um, once somebody has signed up, right, for a consult with you, you have scheduled a time to sit down with them. First, read up on your resources ahead of time, right? So they've already shared with you because you already know uh, a little bit about, about what you wanna share with them. So this is the time to consult your resources, your um, you know, your uh, your desk reference, your supplements reference, things like that, right? Read up on your resources ahead of time. If you've got uh, resources like sway is that you may think that you wanna share with them after you've shared information, just to give them supplemental stuff to walk away with, grab those from Grow Workspace or wherever you like to get them. Uh, and then come with more questions prepared. Take notes for yourself. Add this stuff to your contact manager on their contact card and Get Oil Link so that you are prepared ahead of the call. What other questions do you wanna ask them? Uh, maybe you have a form like the one I was just mentioning or like the one Jackie has that they can actually fill out and Get Oil Link ahead of time so that you already have all of their questions answered so that you both know that you're going to be moving forward uh, with uh, with setting them up for the solutions that they need. Then while you're on the consult, listen for the why behind their openness for help, right? One of the most powerful questions you can ask at the get-go is, you know, why is it important to you right now to get this figured out? What is it that's going on in your life right now that's got you open to help with this problem, right? And then find out what will solving the problem do for them in the big picture. When you've got this figured out, what will life look like for you, right? Um, what is the cost of not solving the problem, right? How is this impacting you? What's going to happen if you don't get this figured out? And then learn their commitment and their budget for solving the problem. If we work together, then uh, what I will very likely be recommending for you is at least 90 days uh, worth of protocols, uh, supplements, oils, things like that, that you can be using. Uh, do you see yourself being committed uh, to, to have the results that you're looking for, right? And maybe you don't share that first part. I don't think Jackie does. Uh, and then you may also want to ask questions about their budget for solving the problem. Let me go back here and uh, Jackie, anything you would add or change here? Are you still with us? Are you muted?
Sorry, yes, I was. Um, so a question in the chat, oh, it keeps moving, hold on. Michelle Powell says, where would you get a consult for, form from? Would you maybe make a Google form? You don't need to do that and then Ashley can tell you why. Um, what are the questions you would ask and is there an easy button consult form in Grow?
Oh, actually, yes. If you are a Grow Platinum member, literally two days ago, this Tuesday, um, we created one for them uh, and we shared it in their office hours. If you have Grow Workspace, go check your business tools. There is a pre-made funnel just like this that we're talking about that is in your Grow Workspace right now.
Good. And as far as um, what, what you've said here on, on the consult and the signup, it, it, you've covered it all. The only thing I would add is, you know, don't be afraid to, to close it out. I mean, I think that's where most people drop the ball is, you know, they've done a great job of asking questions and they've listened and they've um, come up with a, with a suggestions for them, but they, they leave it hanging. You've got to be, have that confident posture of, you know what? Let's just go in right here now and set you up an account and get you the things you need to get started solving this problem.
Hmm. That's right. So be asking all of these great questions and then we move into the next phase where we actually start presenting, right? Now Jackie just mentioned one option and it's definitely one that you want to have as a part of this. Of course, you wanna take them over there to set up their account, right? Uh, but you do have several options if you want to, uh, and, and maybe Jackie, you can help with some verbiage here. Um, there may be some different options here that you want to explore based on that conversation and what you've uncovered with the person that you're speaking with. You may wanna share your story. Um, I would keep your story incredibly brief because this isn't about you. Uh, unless it is very specifically relevant to their problem, if you guys shared a similar problem. Um, you could also use uh, your Get Oil Link built-in theme or a Leg Builder link on your Get Oil Link site to briefly introduce them to Young Living's story. There's some really quick videos that are on these websites that you guys all have if you have Get Oil Link. Even at our $7 a month plan, you have all of these. Uh, briefly introduce them to the Young Living story, the concept of seed to seal, subscribe to save loyalty rewards. Uh, watch the quick videos that are on the Get Oil Link built-in theme. Um, or you could also just go straight over and say, well, let's set you up with an account. And then you navigate over to the product that you're recommending for them on the Young Living site. Now, after sharing that product that you recommend, help them add it to their subscription. Now guys, we used to have to come up with creative language and train ourselves on how we can introduce and make obvious the choice to get onto essential rewards. Now the website does the heavy lifting for you. It shows up at the top. Hey, if you order this much, you subscribe, these are the things you get, right? It'll offer them, hey, you need to add this much more to your cart if you wanna get this month's uh, gifts with purchase. The website starts doing the sharing for you, right, in terms of the things that you need to do. So you can recommend additional products at this point based on what they've shared already. Share this month's gift with purchase and help them complete their first subscription order, right? Again, all of this, you don't have to know about what to say if you're there with them visually and you're showing them. And look, if you're on the phone, if that's the only way that you can do this with them, you're on the phone and you're not in a visual situation like sitting down next to them or on Zoom, then go without signing into your account and walk through on the website so that you, like exactly what you're telling them to do so that you can see what they see. And point out the green banner at the top of the Young Living site that's, you know, recommending how they get their subscription set up or how large their order needs to be to get free shipping or what things they might want to continue adding to their cart, right? Uh, so Jackie, what else would you add here?
Uh, I think that's it. They're walking them through and then um, of course, you always want to have, and because you're in Get Oil Link, um, I assume most everybody here is on Get Oil Link. Uh, you've got. Uh, you've got, you you want to have either a campaign or a members area or something that keeps, you know, you want to talk to them about staying in touch and giving them future information for education, et cetera, because this is where you start the conversation that um, keeps them in touch with you and open and learning more. Because if you try to teach them everything upfront, you're gonna overwhelm them. So this is like a constant conversation. It's not like you sign them up and forget about them. And that's the, that's the problem I see a lot in the industry is that people get them signed up and then they drop, they just like, okay, you're on your own. Here's how to get hold of me if you need me. Well, they don't know if they need you. You've got to stay in touch and keep asking those questions. And that's how you get what Ashley was talking about earlier, where you have a sustainable business that keeps going and that's where your residual income comes in. It doesn't come in from signing them up on a one-time order. That's a sale. A residual income comes from staying in touch, feeding them, educating them, and keeping them learning more and finding out more solutions to their problems.
That's right. That's right. And you guys, Jackie goes into this in great detail on a free resource uh, that is at uh, Jackie McLaughlin dot com forward slash platinum. And that is a free four-part series where we are talking about the conversations that Jackie has. Uh, th- this amazing thing, this uh, this one question that she asks uh, to keep the conversation going and keep people engaged for retention. Uh, that's at Jackie McLaughlin dot com forward slash platinum. But I want to bring you guys' attention here. If you want to dig into becoming more practiced and more effective at being a question asker, right? Being a better prospector, communicator, influencer in your relationships and in your conversations, there is a program that uh, I helped Jackie to create a couple of years back uh, that is at a ridiculously low price for now. Uh, you want to go over there and check this out, you guys. Uh, it is, I want to say it's a, it's a five-part training uh, that is um, quite lengthy in terms of the the scope of what's offered. Jackie gives her exact verbiage that she uses and this isn't just about signing people up. This is also about your care calls. It's about communicating with your brand partners. Uh, it's about being a better leader for your people. And of course, um, you know, doing this in a professional way that flows and is congruent with who you are uh, and feels good for everybody. So if you go over to Jackie McLaughlin dot com forward slash rank up, uh, I'm gonna show you what that looks like here in just a second. You can uh, get access to this course. Uh, it will be revamped fairly soon and it is uh, going to see a price increase once it's revamped. You'll be able to retain access to it once it uh, is revamped, by the way. Uh, but definitely head over here, Jackie McLaughlin four dot com forward slash rank up. So I want to go to website reviews and Q and A and I want to give you an opportunity. We're gonna turn video back on. I want to give you an opportunity, Jackie, to um, to to add anything else that you would like to add here to what we've been talking about today. I'm gonna go screen share and look at uh, Jackie McLaughlin dot com forward slash rank up uh, while uh, while you're doing that.
Well, I appreciate the plug. Uh, like Ashley said, when we, when when I created the videos for this course a couple of years ago, they were like hour-long videos or something like that. And like Ash said, I think there's five of them and they're packed full of stuff. But I recognize this does everybody else that in this day and age, um, short is better and like multiple short videos is gonna be more palatable to people to find time to actually do it and get the benefit from it. So I'm gonna be redoing this, this, the concept of this whole course and it definitely will be more expensive than thirty-seven dollars. But at the thirty-seven dollar, like Ashley said, you'll get um, lifetime access even when I revamp it and and upload different videos, you'd still have access to that, even though you're getting it at this price. And um, this whole thing is really my whole course about teaching people how to have conversations and it's not scripts. I don't want anybody to go into this and thinking this is a script because I don't believe in scripts. Scripts are not authentic. They're not, they they're not you. They're just contrived sentences that feel weird and come across weird. But there's suggestions that teach you how to come up with your own words to ask the same thing. So go into it with that in mind if you choose and um, let me know what you like. I get a lot of great feedback that people just look and it's changed their business completely.
Absolutely. This is getting back to basics and I think becoming a better communicator is really the most profitable exercise you can undergo uh, in this business or really any other. I mean, it's 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 just the most important thing you can do. So um, awesome, awesome, awesome. All right. So you guys, that is Jackie McLaughlin dot com forward slash rank up. And if you want the free training that we uh, offered at Aroma Sharing last year, that is still available if you go to Jackie McLaughlin dot com forward slash platinum, you will be able to find that four-part training there that's totally free. And uh, you're 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 gonna want to check that out. If you guys have not checked this out yet, it is uh, it's it's pretty good. It's it's pretty good. You guys, if if you have checked it out, leave a, leave a comment in the chats. Uh, if you've checked out Platinum or if you've done the rank-up intensive, uh, let everybody know uh, so that we can uh, you know, share our experience here and you guys can all know that this lady knows what she's talking about. Um, all right. So we have, uh, and first, thank you, thank you, thank you so much for being here today, Jackie. And then second, uh, I want to
sign off here or not sign off, but go, go dark.
Okay. All right, cool. All right. Uh, Tanya Milano, are you here? You had signed up for a um, you had signed up for a website review. Yes, there you are. All right. I'm gonna bring you out to chat if you'd like to unmute yourself. Uh, thank you for your patience today and I'm really looking forward to uh, to talking with you about your website. Hi.
Hi. Okay. How do I turn my camera on? Does it matter?
No, it it doesn't matter. You certainly can.
Okay.
All right. So yeah, let's talk. What kind of feedback are you looking for? What are, what are you interested in uh, in learning about today?
Okay, so um, I really want to know more about putting SEO into the different pages. Um, the blog pages to come, you know, I just don't really understand that section as well and the um, HTML. I don't know the lingo, so I would love to just go through, you know, maybe a blog and then see what words I'm supposed to put in there.
Okay.
Doesn't that make sense?
It does, it does. So uh, so one thing, here, let me go over here. I'm I'm gonna show you where you can put these settings in. Um, so a couple of things. Um, in terms of setting your website up, I think one of the most powerful things that you can do uh, is A, you you should definitely go and and get some some specific training on SEO. That's not something that is a, that's a focus of mine. Uh, so it's not something I could really speak to at length, but there's a lot of really great free resources out there that are gonna be applicable basically anywhere. Um, but the general gist, though, if you want to start getting good at getting found, which is what SEO helps you to do, uh, you want to be really sort of mining the language of your ideal person and inserting that verbiage, the specific words and the specific phrase phrases, thinking about what they search for. And there are free resources out there, uh, specifically Google offers these things and there are uh, reasonable paid resources as well. Uh, I would look at um, going to Google first, kind of like how Facebook has free education for advertising. Google has some of that as well. So I would look that up um, so that you can uh, get more familiar with keywords. Uh, and that's really what we're talking about. That's that's what SEO is really based around is keywords. Uh, and the keywords are search terms. So it's the the words that they're using uh, as a single word or a group of words. Sometimes there are what's called long-tail keywords, uh, which is maybe more of a phrase that someone may be searching for. So as opposed to like you could Google online course and you're going to receive a different set of results uh, if you Google how to build an online course, right? One of those is a keyword, the other is long tail. So um, I would, I would do a little bit of learning on that. I'm sure there's a lot of really great sort of, you know, basic getting your feet wet stuff uh, out there that's uh, free to reasonably cheap. Um, the places that you want to focus on uh, on implementing your SEO in your system are primarily on your blog, but you are also going to want to set up your site uh, for this as well. And I believe this is under customize my site. Uh, and what you're gonna want to do here is you're gonna go under advanced uh, options. Uh, you do have something in here for your website analytics. If you want to use a third-party tool, so there are some third-party tools you can insert here. Um, there's other, let me see what else is on here. So customizing the theme is not it. Okay, so customizing sharing description is for when you share on social. Um, to do, to do, what you do want to make sure that you're doing, and I might be on the wrong page for this for your site generally. We don't have Greg here today. So Julie, if you have anything to input here, you're welcome to chime in. Um, but um, but so there's um, meta descriptions is 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 what uh, you want to make sure that you have um, that you have taken care of on your site. And meta descriptions are when you go and you Google something. So what if I'm I'm gonna Google, I don't know, lavender essential oil. Uh, and meta descriptions are these things that you see right down here um, beneath beneath a search result. Uh, and there's typically going to be a good number of keywords and I don't know what's going on with Google and me right now, but it's not wanting to like actually show all of my search results. This is super weird. Uh, but anyway, that meta description is just basically the stuff that's gonna show up underneath the actual link in a Google search result. So you want to make sure you're filling that out and that you're using
Is that what's down at the bottom there?
Um, this is analytics. So this is where you're actually gonna be pasting in code. So if you're using uh, Facebook Ads, for instance, for retargeting, that code would be pasted in here. So this is a little bit different from that.
Oh, okay.
Now, but the the most important place, though, is on your blog. So if we go over to your blog, which I'm just gonna search blogs. I don't know where to find that right now. So go to blog. Um, all right. So blog posts, uh, we'll go to Okay, here we go. Uh, these are your blog posts. So what I would do first is uh, is is take a look at your keywords, right? So I left my children Okay, got you. Um, this one, you know, do you feel like your life starts and stops constantly? Questions are good. This is going to be a better email, like a subject line in an email than it is a blog post. So um, so for do you feel like your life starts and stops constantly? What I would do is be thinking about what the main points are that you're making. Um, and specifically how you would tie that to how this might help someone solve a problem. Because what people are doing is they're Googling for something to help solve their problems. Uh, you know, stress management, yoga, breathing techniques, you know, grief supports, you know, the stuff like that, right? Um, so you want to use your keywords in your title. Um, and then what you're gonna learn in SEO training as well is that you're gonna want to have headers and that's what this paragraph setting is here. You can actually uh, choose heading one. Um, and you're, it's gonna be, show in the code, if you were looking at the code, uh, it actually says H1. Uh, so when you have things in header sections uh, on your blogs, you're actually going to, uh, Google's going to see those as being uh, an important thing to, or search engines generally, but let's, we'll just call it Google because that's the most important one for you to get ranked in. Um, so they're they're going to see something inside of H1 brackets as being indicative of uh, some of the more important content on that page. And so for you to be able to rank for the keywords that you want to be found on, you're gonna want to have the keywords in your title. You're gonna, which is going to translate to your blog post title um, as it shows up in the URL. And you're gonna want to have those keywords showing up in the subheaders and the headers in your section. And there's a certain volume of the mention of these keywords that you also want to be able to include uh, in the body of the text itself. And this is where I would actually consult a qualified SEO training source that's current. Uh, because there is a right and wrong way to do that. There's definitely a way to overdo it and uh, and and produce, you know, negative results for yourself, for sure. Uh, so then finally, the thing that we want to make sure that we're doing, if we want to get found on Google, is go to the advanced options for all of your blog posts. And you definitely want to have an excerpt if you're using the excerpt feature for your site. This is just for, you know, people to be able to navigate your blog a little better so they can go look at other articles they might want to read. But here we go. Our SEO settings is what we put here. The meta description is where you're gonna put those words, right? So if if the title is um, you know, how to overcome grief in two simple uh, you know, two simple steps, ten minutes a day, something like that, uh, then you're gonna write a little bit more about that here. So you're gonna tell them what they need to to read for them to want to click and actually read that article. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I am. So I don't actually take an excerpt from the blog there. I put that in the excerpt.
Right. Now, if the excerpt from your blog is effectively the same kind of thing that you would want to put here, right? So if you're doing a blog that's really informative, maybe you're doing a blog about, you know, the, about, you know, five facts about lavender essential oil or something like that. Um, an excerpt from the first paragraph could work really effectively here. But if you're getting into something that's a little more esoteric, then then yeah, I I would, I would definitely recommend uh, that you um, like that, that you Yeah, yeah, that you approach it more like a summary. Mm-hmm. And you could do that, like the excerpt is, again, this is not something that shows up in the search results. This would just show up if you're using um, if you're using your uh, like blog excerpts on your blog digest page. Because what you can have, and that may be the case for you right now, if you go to yourwebsite.com forward slash blog, is that they have to read through every single blog post to get to the next or scroll through every single blog post to get to the next one. Um, and if we want to just have those little paragraphs with our featured image, then we want to enable those things and that way people can see, okay, well, maybe I'm not so interested in your post about lavender essential oil, but maybe I want to read the one about frankincense and that's a few down. And they'll have the patience to scroll because it's not as far of a scroll, basically. Um, but then for your custom uh, HTML tags, um, these are gonna be things uh, for like Facebook and Pinterest. Um, so you know, that's an SEO setting, but it's less about the search engines as they pertain specifically to this blog. That would be if you want to leverage Pinterest for interest, for for instance. Uh, and I would use a Pinterest training like uh, like Emily Clickhorns for this. Uh, but definitely have a meta description for all of your blog posts and um, and yeah, just in- invest your time in in some basic SEO training. And then you're just gonna want to, you know, start investing uh, some time into adding those additional detail to your blog post.
Where do the H and HTML tags show up? Do they? That's what I'm not want, I'm not understanding. Do they show up?
They're invisible. They're invisible. Yeah. So they're actually in the, they're in the code, the source code for the page, for the blog page.
Okay, so how does it get directed back and forth to that tag, like on Pinterest?
That's a mechanism that well, I I'm I'm not qualified to speak to.
Okay. Yeah.
Julie's got a shrug too. So uh, Greg, Greg, if 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 he were here today, might be able to expound on that further. However, um, and I don't have the link to Emily's Pinterest course, but I think it's in our, um, I think it's on one of our partner pages. Um, she goes into some detail on that and that's a really great course. Um, matter of fact, um, we do have um, one of our members uh, who's been on the weekly work session as well with one of her courses. Uh, she uh, pinned something using uh, what Emily teaches and she gets a couple of leads a day uh, from Pinterest, which is pretty cool. So um, I can't really speak to that whole strategy. I really do more like, you know, PR and social. Uh, but yeah, you definitely want to just make sure that you've got your meta description filled out uh, for all of your blog posts. And then just be focusing on um, on keywords, getting into their mind, right? So um, you know, do some studying on on keyword research uh, so that you can be um, so you can be integrating those into your site.
Okay.
Awesome. All right. I'm so glad that you came out and asked that really good question today. Uh, we definitely, uh, if if there's anyone who's in our community, by the way, I'll just use this for a, you know, for an open call. Uh, if there's anyone who's in our community who is um, is confident in, you know, the basics of SEO and would like to share some of what you know and how you're successfully using your Good Oil-ing site with ranking in the search engines, uh, definitely want to invite you to uh, reach out to us uh, so that we can maybe put our heads together and provide a greater resource for everyone to learn from. But I will say in the meantime, there is some SEO training in Emily Clickhorns Pinterest course. And she is like, her results are definitely speaking for themselves in terms of the folks who are getting leads using what she's teaching, if that helps. All right, we do have, and thank you guys for sticking around and thank you, Tanya, for being here. Um, all right. So we have uh, three more questions. Uh, one of them, Sherry, uh, you're asking about a previous video where there was an offer to link a five-dollar oil sample that either the customer or yourself can pay. Is that still available? I'm not really sure that I know what that is, but I know that it's a thing from a couple of years ago or a few years ago. Um, and if anybody knows, maybe let's put it in in the um, in the chat. If you know, there was some kind of service that you could use uh, that, and and this was, I don't think Young Living did it, or maybe Young Living did it. I I don't know. Um, if anybody knows, let us know in the comments. Uh, there was a thing at some point. Can't really speak to it. So I definitely check the chat and let's see if anyone knows what that thing is. All right, Suzie, if you could please uh, sign up on uh, the um, it's GetOil-ing dot com forward slash website review. I would love to have some dedicated time uh, and um, and 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 actually sit down with you because we've gone way over today. Um, all right. And then uh, here's a follow-up question from Shelley. Uh, since an HTML code is Since an HTML code is invisible, why is it used? What does it do? It may be too elemental of a question. Just don't understand why we need it if it's invisible. So what the codes do on your page is that they, they tell the responding computer or browser or services what to do with that information, right? So we have the stuff that is readable that your end user interacts with. But then there's any number of different mechanisms that your materials, your page, let's say, or your blog post. There's several mechanisms that are performed on that before it becomes readable to your person, right? It may be that you've shared that information on social, in which case you want to be able to know. Let's just say we're, we're sharing a sales page, right? So you are sharing a sales page. You're sending an email out to your list. You're posting on social about this product that you're selling. And you want to know whether your, your sales or your leads have come from your list or from social media. The only way to know that without completely replicating funnels and using different links for everything, which makes no sense, is to use code. So codes will give attribution where somebody came from, or they'll help you to know what those things are. They'll also tell the search engines what to show. It'll also give you the ability, if you use ads in the future, to retarget people who have visited your page. Lots of different things that the codes do that we don't necessarily see. Obviously, this is, this, gosh, this would have been a day that Greg would have loved to have been here. Because he's the guy that really knows all this stuff. But, but yeah, so you, you don't have to do it, right? Especially if you're someone who is focusing on warm market. But if you are getting into other things, if you're using your Good Oil-ing site for things outside of network marketing, that may be something that you want to look into. Right? As a network marketer, if you are working through social networks, you really don't have to worry about some of the higher technical capabilities of what our system can do. You can, of course, use it if you want to, and it makes sense for your business. But you can do extraordinarily well with a very, very low-tech approach, because network marketing supports that, right? It's just all about connecting with people that you know, that love to hear from you and keeping that going until you get on those one-on-ones and you keep those going on and on forever. So thank you, guys, for sticking around. This is a great, big, long call and really, really excited for all of your participation here today. You guys are, I'm going to keep this chat open for just a second, because I see you guys are connecting with each other in the chat. That's awesome. So make sure you've got all of that there. Let me see. So yeah, there is information about the sample thing we're talking about here in the chat. So, and Emily's course page is in there as well. That's in the chat. We'll try to get as much of this as possible into our YouTube replay. All right. Love you guys. We'll be back same time next week. Thank you so much again, Jackie, for being here, imparting your wisdom and pouring into Team Y'all. You guys give Jackie some love in the chat. And head over to jackymclofflin.com/rankup and get access to this amazing course that she's giving away for $37. Pretty, pretty good. So.
It was fun to be here again. Thanks for having me.
All right, Julie, thank you for holding it down in the chat. And guys, we'll see you all next week. Take care.
Bye, guys.